Good evening, everyone. The June 2022 Brookhaven Borough Council meeting will now be called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing, everyone. Madam Mayor.
Good evening, the deceased residents for the month of May 2022. Michael Henigan, Albert Montpelier, Albert Montella, grandfather of Fire Chief Rob Montella and Police Chief Dave Montella. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Willward, would you give us a roll call?
Mr. Heller?
Present.
Mrs. Fuchs?
Here.
Mrs. Heller?
Here.
Mayor Leslie?
Here.
Mr. Vasquez?
Here.
Ms. Swicki?
Here.
Mr. Pappas?
Here.
Mr. Gilroy?
Here.
Mr. Wills?
Here.
Mr. Catania?
Here.
Mr. Willwards, here. Mrs. Boyle? Chief Montella?
Here.
Chief Weiss?
Here.
That concludes roll call.
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor.
Yes, at this time, I would like to call up Eagle Scout Zach Taylor and his mom and dad or other family members. Delaware County, Pennsylvania, Resolution 2022. A resolution of Brookhaven Borough Council, Delaware County, Pennsylvania honoring George Zachary Taylor for earning the Boy Scouts of America Eagle Scout Award. Whereas George Zachary Taylor is the son of Brett and Crystal Taylor, 3634 North Clearwater Drive, Brookhaven, PA. And whereas George Zachary Taylor was a member of the Boy Scouts of America in 1993 and has earned his Eagle Scout Award, which is the highest award given to a youth member of the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas George Zachary Taylor's Eagle Scout project consisted of determining costs of materials and tools needed to design and construct a new horseshoe kit, including new benches and cornhole boards, and to refurbish the surrounding garden area for the Marine Corps days attached to 288. And whereas George Zachary Taylor obtained all his required Eagle Scout merit badges and completed his Eagle Board of Reboot. Now therefore we resolve that the Brookhaven Borough Council, Mayor Leslie, along with his parents Brett and Crystal Taylor, and other relatives and friends nearby can graduate and honor George Zachary Taylor for earning the Eagle Scout Award and extend best wishes to him and the future endeavor. Resolve this sixth day of June 2022, signed by the mayor and his council. Thank you, congratulations. And at this time, I would also like to employ Harry Seta, our commander post.
If I could say a few words about that. Some of Zach's family's here too, if you want to get them a picture. If they want to come forward, maybe you can bring them forward, you can bring them up. But Zach certainly shares some good company here. Some of our Eagle Scouts have been Neil Armstrong, Gerald Ford, Shane Victorina, Sam Walton of Walmart, and Steven Spielberg, filmmaker. So he certainly shares some good company. This is a very, very historic day. Not only for him, but seven, eight years ago, we stormed the beaches of Normandy, freeing the world from Nazi tyranny.
Yes, sir.
The project that Zach did, I got a picture of, I can circulate around here, was he rehabbed the pavilion over at the Marine Corps League. It got damaged in one of the storms. Let me circulate this around so you can see this.
Thanks, Aaron.
He did a very nice job on it. He was also recognized over at the seniors banquet for the project he did. It really had a lot of impact. I know that the veterans certainly appreciate it and that the Boy Scouts have always had a very good work and relationship with the Boy Scouts. So Zach, we appreciate it and we thank you.
The American Legion of Marines, right? And the senior banquet? Yes, at that school. Yes, and that's what Harry was talking about. About, yes.
I think you're shy. Hey, you gotta get this picture.
I have no idea. No, I'm talking to Donna. RCO, today? RCO? RCO?
Thank you. Congratulations.
All right, I have a resolution to read honoring the 50-year wedding anniversary of longtime borough employee and resident Natalie Pino and her husband Anthony Pino. A resolution of Brookhaven Borough Council, Delaware County, Pennsylvania honoring Anthony and Natalie Pino on the occasion of their 50th wedding anniversary. Whereas Anthony and Natalie Pino, 4810 Shepherd Street, Brookhaven, Pennsylvania, were married on May 20, 1972, at Ephiphony of Our Lord Church, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. And whereas Anthony and Natalie Pino have been residents of the borough of Brookhaven since May of 1986. And whereas May 20, 2022 marked 50 years of marriage for Anthony and Natalie Pino, whose life together has been a positive influence on their daughters Valerie and the late Andrea, and other family and friends. Now therefore, Brookhaven Borough Council does hereby extend its sincere congratulations to Anthony and Natalie Pino, wish them many more years of happiness and good health. Resolve this sixth day of June 2022, signed by myself and the Brookhaven Borough Council and Mayor Leslie. In a motion to adopt the resolution.
Just a moment. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Mrs. Ford is not present tonight. Brings us to the first public discussion session. If there's anyone that would like to speak for public discussion, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, please. Come on up.
I'm Billy Yon, I'm at 4512 Chandler Drive. So I see that we're on the agenda for the motion for the speed humps for Chandler Drive. Once again, just coming, trying to figure. So I just wanted to have a better understanding of what the motions were about that are listed here. So it looks as though there's a motion to authorize for a residence survey. Can I have a better understanding of what that is?
The requirement is that the borough must conduct a survey. And that was...
Even though we've gotten the signatures, not once but twice?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, it is our requirement. We have no way around that. So we're mailing out. Were they mailed out yet? It has, yeah, that's true. We approve it tonight, then they will be mailed out.
Okay, they'll be mailed out tomorrow.
Yeah. You can strike the other one from the record, the traffic calming survey. That cannot be considered until we get a positive, the required response. That was incorrectly put on the agenda.
So didn't we have a traffic calming survey? Didn't we?
No.
No.
No, we would do that assuming that we have a positive response. But what's the exact percentage we require? Seventy percent response of ayes from the residents that live on Chandler from Mount Vernon to Coburn Boulevard.
Okay, so the conceptual plan for the traffic calming measures, that's exactly what?
Charles?
That is basically come up with locations of the speed humps.
Okay.
Presenting that in conceptual matters so that the council and the residents can agree or disagree. That's where they want to be installed.
So it's just placement of the speed humps?
Yeah.
Placed.
Locations.
And will we know by next council meeting if this is a go or... I mean, I'm assuming at this time, if we're at this part of it, we have the votes, is...
Can't in good faith answer that?
When will we find out if we have these votes?
We would likely find out. We would need all those responses. Is there a deadline for... What's the deadline as far as when we have to receive those responses?
I believe the deadline is within two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks.
Not sure, well, yeah, I'm not sure. Do we have any, we have to have some kind of wiggle room with that. The U.S. Postal Service can take six months to get you something these days. We are not permitted to do that.
June 21st.
If we stated that a resident-driven survey was approved, then we were wrong. I don't recall whether we did or not to tell you the truth.
Talking about sending out a survey after we got the signatures. Now we've got the signatures for a second time. And now you're talking about adding a couple more beats to it, then you guys are going to have to... I'm going to know if everyone's vote is up there or broken.
You can't ask our vote, you can ask our opinion.
You can't ask.
Hold on a minute, hold on a minute. You can ask our opinion. You can't ask us to vote.
Okay, so I would like to...
I'll allow you, if the council is okay with it, I'll allow you to go right down the line and ask what their opinion is, but not a vote.
Mrs. Ockie?
I don't have an opinion until I find out what the residents want. I'm very concerned with the residents. And when I campaigned there last year,
I think, I think, I think...
I didn't get any input really from people. Nobody really told me that they wanted speed humps.
Did you ask that specifically?
I was, I knocked on every door and I asked people.
All right, all right, we're not getting into a throwdown, everybody, this is next.
I, again, if I believe that the survey is accurate and everyone wants it, I'm all for it.
Mr. Vasquez?
As long as the residents want it. Me too.
Mrs. Fuchs, you too. Myself, you know where I start from the beginning, I approve the speed humps. I would approve the speed humps. Mr. Gilroy?
I fall on the same line as with Jess. I need to see the results from, you know, the residents and then on the street.
Did you read it two weeks ago?
That's correct, yes, I did.
Read it, you saw the signatures?
I did.
Eighty-three percent of the street?
That's correct.
Okay, so what makes you think that they don't want it? Because five people, four did not respond.
I don't think, I don't think, I don't think he said they didn't want it. I think he wants, he said he wanted to see this survey.
I handed a piece of paper that has everyone's actual signature on it.
Okay, Mr. Gilroy, assuming that there's a 70% approval.
That would be very helpful for me, yes.
Eighty-three percent?
That would be helpful, yes.
Because that's what I handed you.
I got from the actual certified one that we're sending out.
So what you guys have us do is not certified doesn't mean anything, just a waste of a couple months' humps. That's very much appreciated by our council.
Mr. Pappas, next.
Well, first, I disagree with it was a waste of time. It wasn't a waste of time. You went out and you got signatures. We now know that there's a number of signatures that you provided to us and they're validated. The only thing I think the council's trying to do here is just make sure it's a legal thing, that we send out our own. When it comes back, we get the percentage. I don't have a problem with the speed humps. I always realized there was a speeding problem down there. Remember, I was a cop for 33 years in the department here, so I recognize that. But I can't make a decision right now, obviously, you know what I mean, until the facts come in. But your handiwork that you did was not wasted.
No.
So don't take it for granted.
The answer is...
How about the survey that was already done, the survey itself regarding the amount of traffic?
It's pointless to discuss that right now. We're doing what we have to do. But you have four votes up here that are affirmative. That's really, that's a majority of seven.
Oh, I don't believe anything that I say is pointless. I don't believe that that's pointless. Chief, are you for them? How about Fire Chief, are you for them?
I don't have a problem with them. I mean, we're going to have issues with the fire trucks, but you know, for your kids' safety, I'm okay with that.
Well, there's a design on humps, I think, that can work around that, I believe. So we talked about that before, but... Is there any... Billy, are you finished for now?
I am finished because I feel like you kind of shut me up a little bit.
I didn't shut you up, but that wasn't my intention at all. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for public discussion? Please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. The first public discussion session is closed. Chief Iser.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. So for the month of May 2022, Brookhaven Borough Police Department initiated or was assigned a total of 849 cat assignments through DelCon. I would just note that is roughly about 100 more incidents than we handled last month. So we are steadily increasing our call volume. Some of the noteworthy incidents, we had eight thefts, one simple assault, five vandalism, criminal mischief, three fraud, three DUIs, two public drunkenness, two disorderly conduct, two narcotics investigations, nine animal complaints, 29 suspicious conditions, one harassment, 29 disturbances or domestic disputes, one missing person for civil complaints, 64 medical assists, six mental health responses, 68 assist other departments, 21 alarms, 22 vehicle crashes, and 25 hazardous conditions or assisted murder. For arrests, we had 20 adult arrests for the month. We had three juvenile arrests. 104 citations were issued. We had 12 parking violations and there were also 104 warnings issued for the month. Just to keep everybody updated on our accreditation process, that is obviously continuing. I continue to implement new policies. And as of today, we are now over 72% completed with all our policies. And that's compared to 55% last month. So obviously, I'm pushing forward as fast as I can, but making sure that we're covering everything we need to cover. So shortly, all of our policies will be complete and I'm already beginning the next phase, which will be where we have to provide proofs of compliance as well as mock assessments. So that'll begin next week. We're actually going to start that next phase. So I'm very happy with where we are and we're definitely on target for where we should be regarding my timeline, when we initially spoke about it. Just a couple other little things. I want to thank Detective Havik and Officer Barth for taking the lead. They sorted through a lot of our old equipment that really had no useful purpose for us. And instead of just throwing the items out, which I believe is what was going to happen, they categorized them and placed them on munisabid. And so far, we've received over $500 for items that have otherwise been thrown in the trash. So I appreciate all their hard work. I also want to thank Officer Eastman for taking a leadership role in our department. He recently completed the firearms instructor course. It's a very difficult course and Officer Eastman excelled in this training. He's going to be a great addition to Officer Wetton in instructing all of us in the most up-to-date firearms training. So a common theme, every month, it seems like I'm mentioning Officer Eastman. I really think he needs to be recognized for his accomplishments. He is a valuable member of our police department and I thank him for his dedication. So as far as training for the month, like I said, he completed the firearms instructor course. He also attended standardized field sobriety testing. Officer Wetton attended monthly SWAT training and Officer Roller attended firearms training. And as the school year is closing, I just want to thank both Coburn Elementary School as well as the Christian Academy. They've been great with us. We've been interacting with them a lot during the school year. And I wish them all a very happy and safe summer during the month. We also attended a 90th birthday drive-by celebration for one of our residents along with the fire company. We were honored to be a part of that.
No.
We also attended the Hometown Hero Car Show at Coburn. And that is the end of my report.
You can't urge, no, no, I mean, you can't urge them to... Thank you, sir. Billy and Caitlin, the deadline is June 21st. It does say that a, anyone that does not mail them back is considered a no vote. You are obviously permitted, call everyone, urge them to mail them back. Just make sure they get them in.
Are they coming back with like a postage fee envelope?
Yeah. Yep, yes.
This was said that this was going to be done way back when. So June after 2020. It absolutely had a whole binder of everything that could've been said and everything we have to leave. This was told to us in June last year.
I understand.
It was going out. This is very disappointing. And I can tell that everybody else is sick and tired of seeing us here, sick and tired of hearing us, just by...
That's not, no, that's not true. I'm not, at all, in the least.
It's, I've never felt this way at council meeting. I'm absolutely beyond that everybody is sick and tired.
I can't speak for everyone, I'm not, I'm not sick of seeing them.
I'm listening to you, you have, in the past, but it does okay.
Yeah, I promise. Just call them and tell them that they'll be mailed tomorrow. Look for them this week.
So who makes that decision that if they don't respond, it's a no?
It was in the resolution. Where did that rule come from?
That was a resolution that council approved last August of 2021.
Regarding speed humps, is that correct? Regarding our speed humps, is the resolution was done August of last year?
That is correct.
Really appreciate you guys.
All righty. Chief Montella, sir. Good evening, sir. Sorry about the loss of your grandfather.
Thank you.
He was an amazing, amazing man.
Thank you.
And he was the last member, almost 100% of the greatest generation that is honored in our banner program.
101 years.
He's the last that we lost.
Yep. Great man, great man.
God bless him.
And I thank council and all you guys for your support of my family during that time. It's a tough time. I lost my mother and my father before, my grandfather, so kind of leaned on him for a little while there. But thanks for your support. I appreciate that, my family does. Brookhaven Fire Company's May 2022 fire report. We had one fire incident in the borough, 18 non-fire, 21 calls for mutual aid, five training sessions, 45 calls for the month, 258 for the year. We had $1,000 loss on contents and we had $300,000 in property endangerment so far this year. We had no firefighter injuries for the month. We had two for the year. Our manpower was 45 calls, averaged 14 firefighters per call, 588 hours in service for the month, 3,644 for the year, five training sessions, averaged 25 firefighters, 150 hours of training logged for the month, 1,355 hours for the year. The following incidents of note in the borough of Brookhaven. We had a pedestrian struck on Deepwater Lane. We had five accidents, 4501 Edgemont, 315 Dutton Mill Road, 3802 Edgemont, 4101 Edgemont Avenue, and we had a vehicle overturned on the bridge at Bridgewater Road and Cantana Way. We assisted Chester Township on a building fire on 4,000 Block of Warlow Road and a building fire on Rayner Road. Assisted Chester City on a second alarm building fire at 332 West Ninth Street and covered the city of Chester while they had a second alarm fire the same time as the first one that same night. Assisted Parkside Fire Company on building fire on West Guyerson Road. Assisted Garden City Fire Company on a fire on Albany Court and an accident with entrapment on Meadow Lane. Our monthly training was vehicle rescue. We did hydraulic extracations on the old fire marshal car in the rear lot and we did stabilization for the month. Brookhaven Fire Company took delivery of our 2019 DCED grant for rescue tools through Lee Ann Kruger's office and the awarded amount of hydraulic tools we got battery-operated was $24,000. So that was a nice grant received. Our fire company, the Brookhaven Fire Company's 100th anniversary open house the past Saturday was a huge success. A lot of families came out and toured our station and we gave out some fire prevention stuff as well. It was a good day, the weather was beautiful and the residents seemed to really have a good time. And I congratulate Brookhaven Fire Company softball team, our softball team. We won the championship game in the Delco Fallen Firefighters Memorial Tournament on Saturday as well. So them guys brought home a big trophy for that as well. It was a profit for the Fallen Firefighters Memorial out at Rose Creek Park and just pays for things for the memorial out there. So that was a good day had by all. Our monthly report for the ambulance for May 2022. Ambulance responded to 236 alarms. We transported 166 people to the hospital. Of those 166, 160 of those were ALS dispatches, 76 were BLS dispatches. And the total responses for the ambulance so far this year, 1,146 ambulance calls. So it's quite busy. Thanks.
Thank you.
Did you get the invite for the Aston meeting? Did you get the invite for the meeting with Aston next Monday night? I already gave them what they were waiting on. That's part of the problem. Madam Mayor.
Good evening. I just have a couple things on my report. I'd like to thank everyone that attended our Brookhaven American Legion Post 94 Memorial Day service. That turned out very nice. I'd also like to say happy 100th anniversary to the fire department. And I would also like to congratulate all the 2022 graduates be safe and make good decisions in the upcoming years. On behalf of my mom and the Leslie family, we would like to thank the Brookhaven ambulance, fire department, police department, the borough employees and council, residents, friends, and family for the flowers, the cookies, the candy, the cakes, the food, and all the cards and messages that we received when our dad passed. Everything was greatly appreciated, so thank you, everyone. End of my report.
Thank you, Mayor.
I just wanted to say a happy belated birthday to our mayor, who celebrated her birthday on Friday.
55.
Happy birthday.
Getting old. Thank you. You're next, Don. That's you.
Mr. Wills.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A copy of the solicitor's report is on file with the borough secretary's office in the event any members of the public would like to review that report. I have several action items for borough council's consideration this evening, and they are as follows. Number one is the current police chief's contract. The borough council is aware approximately one year ago, we entered into a five-year contractual agreement with Police Chief Weiss regarding his professional services as chief of police for the borough. There is an addendum item for borough council's consideration this evening, which basically modifies the healthcare insurance item concerning the chief's contract. And so if it is the pleasure of borough council, a motion would be in order to adopt that addendum to the chief's employment contract.
Who wants the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Second.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any questions? Aye, motion carries.
Very well. Second item on my agenda concerns the new collective bargaining agreement that of course that the borough executed last year with the Fraternal Order of Police, which is the union that represents our police officers. Basically, as part of that agreement, the borough agreed to make certain amendments to the police pension fund. And basically, those two amendments are as follows. Basically, that the police pension fund would be amended to provide for an early retirement benefit in accordance with Act 24, codified as 53 Pennsylvania statutes annotated, Section 771. Prior to agreeing to such amendment, the borough in fact did conduct a cost study analysis, which determined that said provision shall have no appreciable cost to the police pension fund. And second item was that there would be a reduced police pension disability benefit provided to the officers. And that bargain for change in disability benefits would result in an appreciable cost benefit savings to the pension plan and hence the taxpayers of the borough of Brookhaven. Therefore, we need to memorialize those police pension changes in an ordinance. And I have provided a copy of the ordinance to borough council. At this time, if it is the pleasure of borough council, a motion would be in order to simply advertise said ordinance in a newspaper of general circulation.
We're playing you off, Mr. Wills. It's like the Oscars.
So that we may consider enacting that ordinance at the July monthly... So that we may consider enacting that ordinance at the July monthly meeting. And so again, if it's the pleasure of borough council, a motion would be in order to simply advertise this proposed ordinance for council's consideration at the July monthly meeting.
So moved. Who wants the second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or questions? Motion carries.
Third item on my agenda, again, concerns the installation of possible speed humps on Chandler Drive. Again, pursuant to the policy that was enacted by borough council via a resolution on August 2nd of 2021, there would need to be a motion to authorize the borough secretary to forward a resident survey to each household on Chandler Drive between Mount Vernon Avenue and Colburn Boulevard to ascertain their support for the installation on, of speed humps on their block. Again, to deter speeding and assist with traffic calming. If there's a motion to...
So moved. Second.
Uh, can he finish?
I'm, we...
Are you eager to leave?
Simply a motion to authorize the borough secretary to issue that resident survey. Again, a motion would be in order.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions? Motion carries.
Fourth item on my agenda concerns the Brookhaven Storage Land Development Project. I'm pleased to advise that the developer has recently executed the development agreement, the public improvement security agreement, the agreement for escrow and payment of professional fees, as well as the stormwater management agreement. I am simply waiting on one more item, and that is the actual irrevocable letter of credit that I expect to receive in the next week. When I am in receipt of that document, I will forward the authorization to Mr. Contagian, the borough engineer, to certainly dispense with and issue any necessary building or construction permits to begin this particular project.
Do we think it's going to be done this year, Mr. Contagian?
It won't be done this year. It will be begun and initiated this year. I would not suspect this project will be completed in 2021.
Okay.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
It won't be done.
I know. It's going to happen.
That's fine.
No? Go ahead, sir.
And finally, the last item on my agenda concerns the gas-and-go fuel leak that, of course, we experienced off of Edgemont Avenue approximately one year ago in June of 2021. The borough, of course, responded to that fuel leak and provided certainly professional services, manpower, other costs that expended. It cost the borough approximately twenty-thousand dollars to respond to this particular fuel leak. That does not include any costs that may be and have been incurred by the Brookhaven Borough Fire Department. That is a separate claim that is being handled outside of my office. Nonetheless, I am pleased to report that recently the borough did in fact receive a check for approximately twenty-thousand dollars, which again covered one-hundred percent of the cost out-of-pocket expenses that the borough, again, incurred in responding to that particular fuel leak. Again, that does not include any professional services by the fire department, which has their own separate carrier that is handling that claim. Although it's my understanding, I may be getting involved in that if we do not receive movement from the fire department on that front. Other than that, Mr. President, I can report general progress.
Now to Charles with the bad news.
Thank you, Mr. President. On my agenda, I have a Charles Avenue sewer project. We had opened each bid last month. We had one bid received in the amount of one million five hundred dollars. The grant amount was four hundred and six thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. So I make a recommendation that council reject those bids, put that project on hold until we maybe get better bidding conditions.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or questions? Motion carries.
Couple other pieces of information. The Edgemont Avenue Sanitary Sewer line cleaning video inspection. We had awarded a contract to Vortex Services. They're set to start the week after July 4th. Shepherd Street has a water main project about to begin. Chester Water Authority is set to start that work the week of June 20th. And I do, well, let me take this first. One addition to the agenda. We had an emergency sewer repair at 3431 Commerce Drive. The street ladder needs to be repaired, so I guess first.
We have the first vote. Yeah, we have the first vote to add it to the agenda. So he already had the language, so we'll vote. I need a motion to add that to the, tonight's agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or questions? Carries. Go ahead.
And then the next piece of business would be I'd ask the council to consider authorizing the repair of the street ladder at 3431 Commerce.
So moved.
You spoke to Janice about it, correct?
I did now.
Okay. All right. Well, we don't have, we don't really have a choice. We had a second there.
I know. We don't have a choice.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And the final thing, at the workshop meeting, I discussed the borough's, it's called MS4, admissible separate storm sewer system permit. It's a federal permit that we have for the discharge of storm water into the, into the creeks. That permit is up for renewal. So Christian Tooney from our office is here to kind of give a little background, a better background than I could give on the program and what we're required to do.
So I do have a, that's a pollution reduction plan. I have, I can easily mail the full copy to you, but...
Have you already seen it?
Like Charles said, is under this, the, the MPDS stormwater permit is called the MS4 program, which is a requirement under this permit that every municipality in the state has to comply with. And it's been in permit cycles. Generally, in the past, it's been focused on housekeeping, making sure residents are aware of stormwater management and issues like that, like having brochures and something in, in the office that people can get. But now, what the Department of Environmental Protection wants is quantifiable reduction of pollutants.
Yes. Yeah.
So this permit cycle, that one right now, is the DEP wants a quantifiable, quantifiable amount of sediment. And they're considering sediment like fine dirt and things like that. Sediment is considered a pollution, according to DEP. So this permit cycle right now is they're focusing on that. So that is the target pollution. And with this, the MS4 program is this pollution reduction plan. So what this entails is a lot of mapping and planning. So I'm determining how much sediment is going into each storm inlet and then out to a singular outfall into either Ridley Creek or Chester Creek. So there's two separate water sheds. They both have a requirement to reduce the sediment going to each creek. So with the mapping that I have done, theoretically, and these are using calculations that DEP approves of, the theoretical sediment loading going to Chester Creek is over three-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand pounds per year, and Ridley Creek over three-hundred-thousands pounds per year of sediment going to each creek, which is, is quite a lot.
It is.
But I'm also just taking into account the municipal property. Not a hundred percent of the borough is being included in this calculation. The municipal roads, that counts as, and all the, all the storm inlets that go into the outfalls. That's what gets calculated. And then with this, the pollution reduction plan, there's a ten percent requirement of reduction of the sediment that's going into each. So instead of the three-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand pounds per year, the ten percent reduction that borough has to meet in the next five years is thirty-eight thousand pounds per year, reducing that. And Ridley Creek has thirty thousand pounds per year. And to do, to reduce all this sediment going into each, each creek, they're called the MPs or best management practices. So rain gardens, basins, bio swales, things like that, that can capture the water, capture that sediment, and so all of that doesn't go into the creek.
Is there any requirement on the distance a rain garden must be to a creek? Say, can it be, or does it have to be a hundred feet away? Can it be ten feet away, twenty feet away?
I don't know the distance requirement.
I'm asking because you have the whole, the whole plain area of a creek. You have the bank area of a creek. But when, when the creek floods three times a year, it washes through the rain gardens anyway. It's all kind of pointless.
Yeah.
The thing is, MS4 is kind of a joke in a lot of ways. Everyone knows it. And it's, it's just, it's just going to push taxes up. It's, it's ridiculous. So, so you don't know if there's any requirement there as far as distance goes?
For distance?
Best design practices tell us that you shouldn't put that kind of facility in a floodplain.
Yeah.
Nothing saying you can't.
But you can.
Nothing saying that you cannot.
Yeah. But there are things that we can do in the streams themselves, streambank restoration.
Buffer zones?
You could do buffer zones.
So a big problem that I've seen in creeks is not even just the sediment that gets washed into the streets and into the inlets, but the banks, the riverbanks themselves. I've seen a lot of shoring, the sediment, the, the banks are not stable anymore. That sediment just washes away into the creeks. So that's a big problem in Delaware County. All of these major storm events that happen, all of that water gets brushed into these inlets down into a singular outfall, and it just, it tears out the, the, the streambanks. So...
My point is, it shouldn't be really on, on the municipality's shoulders to take care of most of this stuff. A rain garden is one thing, but...
Yeah. Well, according to DEP...
It should be federal or state, but...
Yeah. Well, there are a lot of grants that are...
I'm probably paying in the wind.
Yeah. There are grants available to help the costs. So with this plan, is I've, I've looked at different areas where there's municipal property or in, in the right of ways, and I've, I've come up with a list of BNP's. They're, they're not set, so I, so really is looking at, not every BNP has a high effectiveness, so it's not going to capture a hundred percent of the sediment. So DEP has a list of what BNP's are accepted. So I've, I've taken a look at what has the highest effectiveness values and, and gone from there. Where is municipal owned property? Or sometimes schools can get involved. It's a great educational opportunity, putting a rain garden in. And...
Do residential rain gardens count or no?
They can, yes.
Okay.
I know of a stormwater collaborative that has put in residential rain gardens and projects, and they count.
How, how much of, of an impact would that have?
Rain gardens, honestly, not a lot.
Residential rain garden?
It's capturing not a huge amount of water, so in the whole span of things, it helps, but not quite a lot. So...
So what's your, what's your best plan to, to meet these requirements?
So right now, well, streambank restoration is probably, I guess you could call it the biggest bang for your buck. It's on...
And, and what sort, what sort of, what sort of, what are you planting? Trees, bushes? What, what are you doing?
Stabilizing the banks, pushing out, not, not doing any hard armoring. But see, the problem with that is finding space. And I've talked to Charles about that.
What's hard armoring?
Um, putting in the, um, uh...
Using like rock, rock?
Rock walls.
Rock lining, concrete?
Oh, riprap, sort of?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Block walls, that kind of thing are frowned upon.
Actually, more natural.
Well, that's a fortune right there.
Um, so doing a couple of projects like that would get pretty close to requirements.
But, but does a municipality have that right? You don't own the water, correct?
No. That's...
So you don't have the right anyway?
Commonwealth.
Okay, all right.
But everything else would be on municipal property or, or in agreement with the school or...
And you've identified all those borough-owned properties right along Chester and Ridley Creeks?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is that in this report?
Yes. Not, not all of them. I, I've looked at the ones that...
You'll have to email that to us. It's the size of a Bible. We don't have time to read one page during...
Yeah. But I've also looked at what's, if a municipal property is on like, say, the top of the hill, it's not going to capture much water. So I've looked at areas where it's actually going to capture water. So it'd be most effective. So like locations I thought of was the Christian Academy. I don't know if I'm rousing this right, the Garcia Park.
That's it?
Yeah. The Trimble Boulevard, there's an island median there. That's, that's a little bit of an open space. You can do a rain garden or...
But that's not ours.
We're in Eners Borough, yeah, from Chester Township.
But there's not the state.
The island.
The island isn't the state.
Yeah, where it comes in, from Chester Township.
Yeah.
Does it state on that though?
What are you guys looking at? Like I have three heads for it. What's wrong?
Trimble Boulevard.
It's Trimble Boulevard.
It's Trimble Boulevard.
Oh, oh, my bad.
We did install one there just recently.
Trimble Boulevard.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's one in Trimble.
The southern.
Right.
Well, that's taken care of.
We could expand that. There's, there's, we're just trying to get every nickel we can.
Yeah.
Out there to meet the, to meet the total requirement.
Mm-hmm. I did look at street sweeping. Doing, there's two types of technology. One is mechanical, boom, technology, and you have to do that twenty-five times per year to municipal street.
What percentage of the requirement would that meet, a street sweeper?
That, so...
Ballpark.
Of the thirty-eight thousand pounds per year, it gets to you around two thousand. So really, it's...
Not bad.
And that would cost us...
Not that costly.
That would cost us a four-hundred-thousand-dollar initial investment, an eighty-thousand-dollar cost per year for an employee and their benefits.
Yeah.
It's thirty-five thousand dollars a year for seven...
For seven and a half percent. So...
Had the price for it.
Janice's dream of a street sweeper just died.
No, I, I said, I investigated five years ago. It's thirty-five thousand dollars for seven years. That's what the machine costs. Then you'll have to hire somebody to do it. That's what it was. And you can get a loan.
That was before, um...
Inflation.
The world's economy and supply chain and everything went to hell.
Well, we could have got it five years ago, but that's another story.
We didn't.
We didn't because I didn't have support for it.
Still that one?
That does remind me that I did take into account other BNP's that have already been in place within the borough.
I see.
So I've taken into account different rain gardens and basins at the shops in Brookhaven and other BNP's around. There's a, quite a number of them.
What are BNP's?
Uh, best management practices.
Oh, okay.
Your rain gardens, your basins.
Okay.
Vegetated swales, things like that. And the basin at, um, the Brookhaven Memorial Park has a basin.
That's new.
Yeah. So that, so you're not starting from scratch. I have taken into account...
It sounds like we're close to starting from scratch.
Very close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Bad News, down in the...
Just laying it out there, because it's not, it's not a cheap, it's not a cheap program.
It's not going to be cheap.
And I'll be honest, all municipalities, Delaware County and the state are going to do the exact same thing.
At, at what, at what rate are we at with everybody else? If you could give us a... Probably about the same.
You're, procedurally, we're probably, we're probably a step behind procedurally. As far as getting the, the PRP approved by the state and getting the permit renewed. A handful of towns have actually started construction, and that's where there's finally starting to realize the impact it has to the, the annual budget of each town.
What towns are they?
It does, and it will.
Probably Rutherford, Wallingford.
No, it's actually, yeah, Wallingford started theirs. Yes, that's one.
Did Norwood start?
Morton Borough has, has, has one or two facilities under construction or constructed. Any others you could, there, I just know when Wallingford started, they were shocked at the dollar amount that they have to put out. I've talked about this at the workshop. Another unfunded made it that's come down that's up to the borough and its residents.
It sounds like you're looking at over a million dollars. Easy.
That's a, that'd be easy.
Easy.
Five years ago.
There are grants that I know other municipalities have, have gotten.
So...
So... So-
Have you- I'm sorry. So, just so I have a better understanding, this is supposed to be over a five-year timeframe. So when does that clock start?
That clock starts when the borough still needs to renew their permit. And that gets accepted when, so this pollutant reduction plan right now is in a 30-day comment period. I advertised it in the Daily Times, May 23rd, and that comment period will end June 22nd. And the public is, can look at the plan, review it, comment on it, and I can make, and I will note any comments, and comments from the council, and I can make changes. And once I submit that plan, submit this plan to DEP, they approve it, the borough gets their permit, and that's when the clock, the five-year clock starts.
So are we held to, in that five-year, is it like, okay, for year one, we have to have this many things, and year two, year three?
It's at the end of five years.
End of five years.
Yeah. And each year, I do an annual report, I'll note anything that has happened. So DEP's-
So just so the public is clear, you're telling us, I know you're the messenger, you're asking a borough this size to spend a million dollars over five years?
Not that exact amount.
Kind of give or take. Charles shrinks in his seat down there, but it's true.
It's the truth.
Bone Donaway warned us about this three years ago. It's nonsense.
It's a federal state.
Meanwhile, DuPont, meanwhile, DuPont Company, I'll probably get sued by DuPont now, dumps 10 tractor trailer loads of dioxins directly into the Delaware River every week and their grandfather. But, you know, a little runoff in a borough like this is going to destroy the Chesapeake Bay or whatever they're worried about.
The Delaware River.
Whatever. Which has been destroyed since long before we were all born. Just let the public know what hogwash it is. We'll do our best.
Yep, I think that's what DEP really wants to do. Yeah. Unfortunately, you're not, you're not the only municipality.
So what happens if, you know, within those five years, we don't, you know?
That was my next question. What sort of fines are you looking for?
What are the fines?
I'm sure DEP will do, I'm quite, I'm honestly not sure. I'm sure DEP will do something.
Oh, yeah, they'll do something.
Much.
I would expect, yeah, I would expect that the real answer is, it could be subject to consent order and fines. I think probably a more realistic answer is, every municipality in the state of Pennsylvania is under these same guidelines, and I bet you every borough council, every board of commissioners throughout is having the same discussion, once they realize the cost of this. I would expect what will happen is that five-year cycle comes, they're going to determine how many people have complied, how many people have not, and consider an extension. So it may be appropriate to contact our local representatives to kind of get that information out now while we still have an opportunity to push that deadline.
What sort of grants are available?
State has-
How many, I should say?
Uh, it's only like two or three.
Is it going to be 49 municipalities competing for two?
Yeah, right. There's a lot of municipalities competing.
Right. I think we have 49 in Delaware.
Yeah, they're competing against us.
Sure, that's what I'm saying.
Right. The state has a watershed restoration protection grant. The state has a growing greener grant.
That's one of the two.
The county has some money that's been out there that's kind of hit and miss. The state has a Pennvest program, which is a revolving loan program, low interest rates, but it's still revolving. It's a loan. And everything's competitive. Everything's competing against another town who has the same requirements as you do.
So what happens within this five years? They come and they approve the plan, everything's great, and then some of these guidelines change. And then it's either whatever was, you know, approved, agreed upon, now those stipulations have changed, and now it's going to cost us-
Right. That's my worry. This is, this is, this is our third permit cycle. So the first one was, like, as Kristen said, it was just education. Let people know that, you know, don't dump oil in the storm drain. It sounds, it sounds pretty reasonable. People were doing that.
Yeah.
Don't do that. So that's been, you know, that problem's been addressed in a large part. Second permit cycle was very similar. Now, this one requires, you know, pollutant reduction. We have no idea what the next one's going to be. Will we have to address, you know, fertilizers, nitrogen and phosphorus, and other chemical compounds that are being discharged? You know, PCBs is another one that's out there that, you know, how do we deal with that? How does a small borough deal with that? And it's not, it's not a reasonable request for a small borough to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, this permit cycle is focused on the sediment, which a lot of people think, that's not pollutant, that's just nature, but, yeah, I don't, yeah, we don't want to know what's next. DEP has a list of-
Well, the sediment includes fossil fuel runoff and whatnot. It's not, it's not just, correct? Or am I-
They're targeting sediment because it's quantifiable. There's some way to measure it. They can go take readings in a stream during a storm, they can determine, you know, how much, they call turbidity, how much sediment's actually getting into the stream. So, you know, after this permit cycle is, they can do there whatever they did in the first time and determine there's really been a reasonable reduction in sediment. The other part of sediment is, if there, the other contaminants I spoke of, you know, the chemical contaminants, a lot of those are latched to the sediment. So if you remove the sediment, you remove some of those other contaminants at the same time.
Yeah, that's what I was, yeah.
So the bottom line is that PRP is advertised in the papers that there's a comment period that's open for any resident to review the plan and make comments. Borough council would have to approve this at next meeting? We have to actually approve the plan?
I haven't had a-
Okay, so we don't have to, we'll just make it, authorize us to submit that plan to DEP. We'll make that submission. And then it was about 30 days for them to review it in the past?
Give or take, yeah.
Yeah. And then a permit's issued once it's approved. Generally, it goes through one review cycle. We'll have comments, we respond to the comments, and then the permit's issued, and then the time clock starts.
Do you think it would be a good idea for council to have a special meeting, just to have us discuss it and have people here, who might want to ask questions?
Considering the cost?
Considering they don't know what's in the plan, what he's submitting.
Well, the cost alone.
You know, it would be-
Well, the cost, but what it is, we have to do.
If you have a PDF, that would be easier, and I don't know how to get it out to the public. If it could be on their website, or the hard copy can be left here for people to review, but, I mean electronically, more like-
Would you email, would you email it to us?
He can help you with that. He's a computer guy.
Yeah.
He'll do it. John will help us.
Can you do a PDF? I break it up into a couple PDFs, so it's not so big.
Yes, you can.
No, that's fine. But John will work with you.
Yeah.
Mr. Will work.
Yeah.
But he's, he'll know.
We appreciate you talking about it. We've mentioned it here and there over the last three or four years. We've never had an in-depth conversation about it. So, when Mr. Catania asked, I wanted you here tonight, so the public knows what we're faced with, particularly the cost.
Not just appropriate, so-
No, yeah.
No, it's not.
Please keep that in mind.
Oh, no, we do.
Yeah, oh, well, whatever.
Thank you, though.
So do you think you should put it on the agenda for the workshop, then? And we could at least talk about it after everybody's seen the PDF?
We can talk about that this week.
Well, we're going to have to. We have to know what's in it.
Yeah.
And I have to understand how much the money's going to cost. Because it's going to impact next year's budget, I'm just warning people.
I think the monetary value's going to change, though, depending on what we do.
Yeah. I wish the number of different projects-
We're behind the goal.
That surpassed the sediment production requirement, but I make a note of my list of projects that, you know, the borough doesn't have to construct every project. This isn't written stone. If next year, two years later, you guys decide on, oh, I want this instead, that's fine. The plan is not stone-stone. It will just have to go through another review process, another 30-day comment period, so the public is made aware of any changes to the plan, a new project is being proposed, that sort of thing.
Can you go back to the buffer zones?
Sure.
What areas in the borough did you identify that we could add buffer zones to? I mean, most of our banks are-
They're shared. That's-
And tree lined.
Yeah.
So is there, there is no room for improvement, really? Unless you take away the fishing spots in Chester Creek. And then you'll have people out with the torches, rightfully so.
The smaller tributaries-
Yeah, when we're talking about the streams, we're not talking about like Chester Creek. We're talking about more the tributaries.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the two-
Yeah, not the main channels.
Yeah, sorry, more the smaller tributaries going into the creek, so-
Oh, okay, I see.
So Shepherd's Run, that's a pretty, I haven't actually gone out and looked at the banks, but there are some areas that are-
It's only exposed for a few hundred feet, isn't it?
Of what?
Shepherd's Run, right? And it's tree-lined already.
Yeah. I'm looking at, it's just north of the swim club.
Right next to it.
Well, yeah, but that's really close to the swim club. There's no real room to widen the banks, but up north of that-
I see.
There's a section of the creek that's farther away from people's houses, and it's a little bit steeper, so I'm sure there's some swine.
Room for improvement, okay. All right, well, we'll talk about it. We're probably boring everyone at this point.
I just have one more question. You had said that there was obviously one of this 30-day comment plan right now, and it's been advertised. How does the public, how do they comment onto the plan, and how does that get back to you so it can be reviewed?
They can comment, they can comment and contact the borough. And John, I can, if any comments come, just forward them to me.
Sure. We'll get it out on social media. No one's going to see that ad.
You don't have my email truck.
Oh, I do. Yeah. A week, that's all that I have, so.
Thank you.
Do you want my coffee coins?
Yeah, give that to John.
Yeah, that'll be very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your help.
It's a little summary. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
No, we'll give it to John.
Thank you very much.
So that's all I have, and I think I used our time for the next year.
Yes. Yes, you did.
I thought NDI was back.
Excuse me?
I was talking to Charles.
Are there something else he's supposed to ask for a motion on that's on the agenda?
What'd you miss, Charles?
It was the-
Motion by traffic, motion to authorize the structural, a traffic-
Let me discuss that.
Let me get that.
Let me discuss that.
That's on the agenda. Be careful.
Let me discuss that.
We discussed it. We said we were going to, we have to punt that to August.
Why?
July.
I mean, July. I'm moving ahead a month. Mr. Catania inadvertently put it on the agenda. We need, we need the positive results from the survey before we go forward.
Wouldn't that vote for nothing else? If you're going to, why not just vote on it now so that when you know the-
Because, because we would pay Mr. Catania's engineering firm. We can't assume that we're going to get positive results, although I fully expect to get positive results. We can't make that assumption and pay Mr. Catania and his firm to do something that we-
So you can't just do it and go fix now, no, no?
No. No. Because, say, 50% comes back, which, again, we don't expect. We can't spend, say, $6,000 of taxpayer dollars without a positive vote. I don't see why that-
I don't understand. How, what we were just talking about now didn't diminish the importance of anything that you keep talking about. How does that, what, I don't see that on the agenda.
Don't see what on the agenda.
The Department of Environmental Protection was able to get that in.
Was it not on the agenda?
No, no action, just no actions. The only thing-
Yeah, they're actionable, right.
Our council needs to take action on, so it's just discussion. So we're just presenting information, just like we did with the, with the, you know, the work on Edgemont Avenue, sanitary resorts, information. The only thing that really needs to be on the agenda is items that council needs to take action on.
And action. Motion, yeah, resolution, et cetera.
Okay, so like, last October, when you told me you could not add the, anything about Chandler Drive, you told me you couldn't add it because of, I could not add the last night use of the Sunshine Law Amendment signed into law by Governor Wal. Agendas can only be had additions 24 hours prior to meeting.
Because at the time, that was brand new, and I was unaware of the exact procedures. I don't see why that's, I don't see why that's funny. I was unaware, it was brand new. No.
I don't understand how many more hoops we're going to have to go through.
All I can do is what I can, I'm legally allowed to do.
Terry, we have here October 2021, you said you-
If you guys would like to speak, approach the podium, please. Because the camera can't hear you. There's no microphone over there. If you'd like to continue, you're going to have to approach the podium.
But we're not at the open discussion part.
Sorry, back on October 5th, 2021, you told me that I have to take it to council. I'm going to have Mr. Wilwicky added to the October workshop agenda, and then we will vote in November.
Wilwork.
Oh.
Wilwork. I apologize.
Well, then it's probably something that slipped my mind. You understand, hey, Kayla, you understand this is a request, that I've worked with you since day one? Since, we have a seven-person council here. We have debated this. We, my opinion has never changed. I don't, I don't mind you being upset. I understand why you're upset. I told you from the get-go, it was up to me, I want to put the speed humps in without any process. I'm not happy with all these processes and the hoops you have to jump through. I'm really not. If I was in your position, I lived on that street, I wanna do speed humps, I would want them in the day after I asked. So I understand that you're upset, but there's nothing I can do. I have to follow what my legal, what my solicitor here to my left says. I have to do it. I have no choice.
So why, back in October, you said, "I'm gonna take this to council," then you said, "Hey, I need you to, I need a letter from everybody. I need to know that everybody-"
Then I, then I likely, if I said that, I had the procedure wrong. Have you ever made a mistake in your life? Have you ever had a procedure?
Every day, Terry.
Okay.
This is, since two thousand sixteen, we have been requesting help. When, what happens when one of my children, my youngest, I was pregnant with him at the time, he's five, he looks both ways.
I understand.
It is very difficult for him, a little five-year-old, to see over a truck, to see if another car is coming.
I-
What happens if my son gets hit?
I drive down there to fifty-
Mr. Wills, who do I sue when my son gets hit? Who takes care of him to make sure he's okay? It's up to this council to take care of my family. We have been begging. We have forty kids on that street. Forty kids, and you're not sure if it's okay. And I can tell you, Janice, two people told you about the speed humps.
Yeah, it was you and the other lady, and that was all.
So don't say that nobody told you.
All right, all right, all right. Both of you, hold on. We're not, wait a minute. We're not, we're not getting, we're not getting into, we're not getting into a fight.
I am so disappointed. I am so disappointed in this council and the borough, because my children are at risk. Not yours, not most of theirs, mine.
All right, nothing from the audience. We're fine.
Continue on with our meeting.
All right. Good evening again. Mr. Wilwark, remove board of health from all future agendas. The borough no longer has the board of health because the county took it over. So I am no longer the chair. I need a motion to approve the May two, twenty twenty-two council meeting minutes.
Still moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions or opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the May twenty-three, twenty twenty-two council workshop meeting minutes.
I make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or questions? Motion carries. I have an ALS update. It's no real update. We did get our cost from Mainline Health, and that was for the annual cost for Aston Township and the Borough of Oak Haven. So we are meeting next Monday via Microsoft Teams with Aston Township and their team to discuss percentages. And I will hopefully have an update at the August meeting, but we are still, or July, keep jumping ahead a month, July meeting. So we are still working on that. That's all I have for now. Ms. Wilwicky.
Thank you. We do have bills to pay this month, and I'm going to go through them. General fund is one hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars, fifty-two cents. Sore fund, five thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents. Uh, trash fund, fifteen hundred dollars. Highway road fund is a hundred and seventy-two thousand, forty-two dot cents. For a total of two hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents. I will make a motion so we can have that approved and the bills mailed out tomorrow.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions? Motion carries.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilwicky. Mrs. Fuchs.
Thank you. The ordinance committee will meet on Thursday, June sixteenth, to continue our discussion on the responsible contractor ordinance, otherwise known as the RCO, and to tweak it to meet the borough's needs. The Family Day and Rec Board committees both met on the twenty-sixth. Because costs are much higher now, and we have a tighter budget for Family Day, we are evaluating some of the entertainment we had in the past and maybe changing a few things and getting a bit creative this year. The committee and council are committed to having a fabulous Family Day, and we have done, as we have done every year previously. Yoga and volleyball are going strong, and I'm happy to report that we have a great following for both, and that Terry hasn't passed out of her exertion yet. Proceeds from yoga and volleyball will go to the Rec Board. We had approximately forty people sign up for yoga and volleyball, so we're really, really happy about that, and I'm hoping that we continue next year, next summer, with both of those activities and add some more. June fifth, we held our flea market in the gym. The Rec Board profited about five hundred dollars, which will help fund future community events. Another flea market will be scheduled with expanded lead times and advertising. This will result in more table reservations as we allow for more time for the event. June eighteenth is our first twenty twenty-two concert in the park, at Eaton Park. Dennis Palmer will be entertaining us with music from the forties through the eighties and more, all beginning at seven P.M. July seventeenth is the second annual Show for Hope Car Show at Coburn Elementary from ten A.M. until two P.M. This car show raises money for the Hope for Haley Foundation. Food and beverages, fifty-fifties, door prizes, music, and of course, classic and stylish cars will be on display. The Hope for Haley organization's mission is creating a better tomorrow through mental health awareness and increasing access to care for children and adolescents through connection and community. July twentieth will be another concert in the park at Eaton Park. More information will follow on that. And mark your calendars, we will have another electronic shred event on Saturday, November fifth. More, I'll keep on reminding everyone as we get closer to that. I am still working on a chip and vaccination clinic with Providence Animal Center. As of right now, I am not able to get a date, but I'll keep on trying. And I just wanted to end my report to congratulate all the twenty twenty-two graduates and to also congratulate our fire department for the hundredth anniversary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fuchs. Mrs. Heller.
Sure. I wanted to let everyone know that we completed the DCED Greenways and Trails Recreation Program application on five twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two. It was submitted.
Great job on that.
I wanna thank the baseball, softball commissioners, as well as Tom Dykes, as well as Mr. Catania's office, and John, and Mrs. Fuchs. It was a very, very lengthy process, but we were able to get it done. So fingers crossed, we'll hopefully hear something by February if we receive that grant, and that would be for the lights for the stadiums there. I wanted to echo a little bit what the Mayor Leslie said on thanking the American, Brook of American Legion ninety-four for the wonderful Memorial Day service, as well as Commander, Post Commander Harry Seth, keynote speakers. And again, it was a beautiful way of remembering all those that made the ultimate sacrifice. Attended the baseball closing ceremonies this past week, this past weekend, so I wanna thank the volunteers and the coaches and the board, because without them, we wouldn't be able to have these wonderful programs that we have. And again, congratulations to the fire department tomorrow for their one hundredth anniversary. So that's the end of my report.
Mr. Papas, sir.
Mr. President, my committees did not meet, so I do not have a report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vaskis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just something short on today, June sixth, nineteen forty-four. It's a moment in the American epic, spans centuries, and it was a moment that outshone nearly all the, all the others. In the Man of D-Day, the Rangers climbing the high cliffs, the pilots nursing their gliders to a crash landing, the soldiers struggling forward in bloodstained water. We find America at its best. We find America willing to join its allies in a noble cause. We find an America willing to stand for liberty on distant shores. We find an America willing to pay the price for freedom. We find an America willing to fight for what is right. We find an America unafraid to be great and strong. You see, D-Day is not just a historic tale from yesterday. It's an instruction to us today on how to conduct ourselves, and for us tomorrow. We have a duty to remember those men of seventy-eight years ago, and we do. And we have one more duty, to walk in their footsteps, to deserve their sacrifice, and to steel ourselves for our own duties and for our own moments of American greatness still to come. Thank you. I cannot take credit for that, but figured I'd share it with everybody. As far as zoning, I have no news updates. Onto Public Works, we had forest storm, sanitary storm sewer backup calls. Three of the four issues were with the homeowners. The first one on the homeowner is two thirty-two Mars. The second is thirty-seven fifty-one Ridgewood. And the fourth was thirty-four sixteen Williamson, which we got our, our trailer, our jet trailer to clear out. And as we commented earlier on thirty-four thirty-one Commerce, that's gonna be repaired. As for the sewer main cleaning, we cleaned five sections of the sanitary sewer mains on three different streets. So far, year-to-date total is eighty-six sections. Hoping to keep up on that and try and keep everything clear. Just in general, the second quarter shipping was completed, and we handed forty-eight appointments. We removed a down tree at the garage that fell onto Triple Run Condos property. We checked a down tree that was reported on forty-six Ruth Road. The tree's on the homeowner's property. We removed that tree branch on Cambridge in the area around Spring, Spring Street. The Public Works team met with the CWA about the water line insulation going on Shepherd, taking care of any concerns that they had at the time. We located and marked out sewer lines on Greenwood Street for the upcoming gas work in that area as well. The Public Works team checked a down wire that was reported at the end of Shepherd towards Coburn. It's a cable company line, and they were notified. Twenty hometown hero banners were installed in our town. Thirty-four PA one-call tickets were answered. Our year-to-date total is a hundred and sixty-eight. A no outlet sign was installed at, installed on Hillside at Argyle. The Public Works team pressure washed the Butterfly Garden area, cleaned up that whole area at the Cambridge Island and gazebo. Barricades were dropped off at Cambridge Road for the Fire Department's memorial. Barricades and cones and trash cans were also dropped off for the car show. Four hundred and sixty-two pounds of coal patch were used to fill potholes that happened to pop up. Year-to-date total is fifteen hundred pounds. Under the parks, we replaced a damaged sliding board at Sampson with a new slide, removed graffiti at Eaton and Memorial Park. Police department was notified. We pressure washed the playground equipment, equipment at Memorial, moved additional diamond text dirt to the areas needed. And we also removed a temporary fence that was around Memorial and Sampson Park, rain gardens. If anybody happens to see any graffiti or anything like that at any of the parks, feel free to email myself, or if you have to, call the police department, just so they can get involved, get an investigation opened up. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gilroy, sir.
I supposed to thank, congratulations to the fire department on a hundred years. That's impressive. I'm really proud to say Brookhaven Fire Department's my fire department. It's, it's quite a testament, and it's one of those things where everyone in the county, they know, they know. Like, it's just, you know. So I just wanna say I really, really, and congratulate you guys on a hundred years, and I'm proud to have you guys service us. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're here. Mr. Leslie, sir.
Reminder, summertime in, in the fire pits, it's sticks and twigs only. Never leave it unattended, and keep a garden hose readily available in the area of your fire pit when you're out there with your family at night. Construction on CoCo's, that started. Everybody sees that. Coburn's going, we had some issues over there with the fire alarm going off at like three in the morning. We got that addressed with Pendelco, so that's fixed. Lowe's had some issues with their sprinklers, a forklift hit it, and then we ended up finding a hole in the dry system out on the dock that was giving us a problem up there. We kept going up there for that fire alarm. The utility work did start on Greenwood Street. They're out there salt cutting. Is there gonna be an ordinance meeting, Donna? Do you know that date?
Sixteenth?
Sixte- I didn't hear you. You did say that?
Yeah.
Okay, I missed that, I'm sorry. Be better next time. June sixteenth?
Yeah.
Okay, six-thirty, seven o'clock, what time?
Seven.
Seven, okay.
Oh, wait a minute. No, we changed it to six-thirty. Something requested six-thirty.
Okay. And then Green Estates over there, we're, the link went on some of the sprinkler permits, and Mr. Catania's gonna check on that with a large sprinkler company, and Chris Whitley over there from Franklin Realtors. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bring us to the second public discussion session. If you'd like to speak for public discussion, please approach the podium. State your name and address for the record, please.
Amdix three oh five West Brookhaven Road.
Hello, Thomas.
Hello there, for the recreation board. Thank you to council, Mr. Catania, everybody else for helping us get the grant together. It definitely will make a big improvement for some of the, for the kids' programs. Other programs going on, as Donna said, we have the first concert on the eighteenth. Besides our concert with Dennis Palmer, we'll have some light refreshments there, and Kona Ice will be there for, a water ice type program for us. So it'll be lots of fun with that, that is a purchase on that. It is a free concert, however, donations are welcome to help defray the costs, so we're looking for that. A couple of new programs that are coming up, I just worked out the details, and it's actually starting to go on Facebook now, working with Middletown Library. We now have a Books on Blankets program for the month of July, on Thursday mornings at ten-thirty at Eaton Park, be run by the Children's Librarian from Middletown Library. They'll be reading books, bringing, doing songs, games, playing with the kids, just having a good time with them. It's a free program, you just have to pre-register. It's now, I'm putting it on all of our Facebook pages, so you can link into that and link to the library's site, so you can do it. It is for ages five and under, so that's the only problem with that, only thing with that one. We do have another one starting in July, correct? This Olivia, we talked about?
July?
Yeah, July.
July, it'll be on Tuesdays, I think we're saying. Lunchtime at Eaton Park, and it'll be a reading program, one of our young citizens is gonna be reading books for younger children and some older children there at the park, doing as a lunch program and having lots of fun with that, so that'll be going along as well. For those who are interested in history programs, if you like history, especially the Civil War, the library is doing a free, notice that, free lecture series on the Civil War on Friday mornings at ten o'clock at the Middletown Library, which is literally five minutes up the road. If you don't know how to get there, ask, it's really easy.
Wayside Market.
Across the street from Wayside Market. It starts at ten o'clock on Friday morning, you just have to pre-register for that. It's two, two lectures in July and two lectures in August. So we're working with them. We're trying to work with the adult, the adult librarian, getting some other programs going for adults, both seniors as well as working adults and things like that, so we'll do some evening programs, morning programs. And yes, these are all free to us, Janice.
No, I, I always appreciate-
We're extending our programs without costing the borough any money, using your county tax dollars. We, we, you know, it's one of the things we don't think about, counties right there, so we're using that to try and, you know, develop that. They're looking forward to doing more, more work with us and, and as well. So we're gonna try and collude them a lot more in things, what's going on. So we're hoping just to expand our programming.
That's a good idea.
So hopefully, that's that one. On, going to the personal side with the M four, is that what it's called?
MS four.
MS four.
Okay. Been doing a lot of reading on my own with other groups and things to do, and you were talking about residential programs and things like that. One of the things the borough may need to, may need to look at and see what's going on is changing our ordinances on grass height. One of the things they're saying is that if people would increase the grass height of their, the grass height on their cut by about one inch, it'll reduce about twenty-five percent of the runoff from yard properties. So that's an idea there. We're talking, adding that much to your grass, so you're talking that much grass.
Can you get us the paperwork on that?
I have a couple websites I'll have to-
Okay, if you can get them by John.
Um, just things like that.
And our grass complaints would triple. And blowing it in the streets. We gotta stop blowing it in the streets.
Stop blowing it in the streets. And thinking about that, driving up and down, watching our business, the lawnmower, lawn companies at our businesses?
Yeah.
They're going like this out of Edgemont Avenue, Brookhaven Road, and it's crazy, ridiculous, and they're not, they're not falling through that.
It's in every neighborhood.
In every neighborhood.
Trust me.
The other-
I might never see them in the streets.
The other thing with going through the grass, the yards, is trying to get away from Mr., you know, Green Thumb and all these lawn companies that are making your grass look better and, you know, let grass be grass. Don't go for a green grass. All it does is create bugs, or creates more and more dirt, more chemicals into, into the waters. So going that and all things with that. The thing with that also-
The borough can't control that, though.
I know, but we can ask people to do that. The other thing is-
Low sells an organic weed killer that is awesome.
Okay.
That's good to know.
The others-
I don't get any of them, like money.
Is to take, instead of having an acre of just pure grass, put in bushes and trees and flower beds and that kind of stuff, and make it more, make it look more like Winter Tour or Longwood Gardens, and spend some time with that, give a place for, for the rats to live. It's like mulch, you don't do that. It, it just helps, it helps retain the water. And that's a, you know, that's a couple of things that are out there, that people are saying with that. And that's my comment on that one, and the other comment I'm having, I'm keeping it to myself, about Chandler Drive.
Okay. I hear you.
Thank you for not commenting. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for public discussion? If so, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Charles Leslie, seven oh three Cambridge.
Thank God.
The MS four thing, also, with our contractors that come here and work in the borough, they're pumping into the street, they're not pumping in the silt bags. We gotta stop that. They just pump it down to the nearest inlet. It needs to go into a silt bag. You see it?
Who's checking this?
When they're pumping out. So that's another big thing.
They need to be tall.
You got, they're gonna start construction over here. I'm, I'm in construction. Anywhere I go, they have the number fours to tire wash, but they have a labor there washing the tires, also power washing. We cannot go into certain townships or burrows with mud on our wheels.
What location are you, are you referring to?
I'm everywhere, dude.
You said they're gonna start over here, what were you referring to?
The storage bins.
Oh, I see.
So along with putting the number fours in, coming out of the driveway, they need to have a labor there power washing any trucks coming in and out also, getting the mud off their tires. It's the only way to control it also. Just throwing that out there.
Doesn't really cover MS four, though, because MS four is not looking at-
It's huge. It's huge, dude.
We know, I know it's pushing sultation, but MS, they're not inspector, would inspectors hit us, hit us for that? I don't think they would, it's a contractor thingwork.
So how do we?
Whatever. I don't think they could hit us for not enforcing-
Every little bit helps.
Oh, you all missed my point.
The industry's weak.
I know. It's a little late.
You probably wanna, you'd apply to be the driver, and you'd have to beat me to the applications. I'm sick of my job.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak for public discussion? Good. Council?
I do. I do.
Inspectors, anyone else?
I do.
Mrs. Heller.
I have three things really quickly. I want to, I forgot to thank one big, you know, huge thank you to John Woolworth for doing the application, because he was, you know, for weeks on the computer asking for all this information, so we probably would not have had that that done without John. So thank you, and I apologize for not thanking you earlier, but you were, I don't know. The second thing is.
Package tomorrow.
The second thing is, is that, you know, listening to Billy and listening to Caitlin, I just want to remind people that we are volunteers up here. We don't get paid very much for this. We put in a lot of hours. This council is probably one of the hardest working councils. In the last year and a half to two years, you know, I understand the need for the speed humps, and it is a priority for us, but we also had a gas leak, we've had COVID, where we had to accommodate and make sure that we are communicating to the Borough everything that we possibly can. This is local government. Things don't move fast, so there are timelines. We are moving forward. You know, we aren't perfect. Things do change because of COVID, so I just want to remind the public that we do work our hardest up here, and we have been thrown a lot of curves in the last two years, so I just want to keep that in mind. And the last thing is, is that I meant to mention earlier, and just to keep the family and of all those victims in these in the in these last mass shootings, because it does hit them a lot, so that was it.
I'm going to use COVID as an excuse for the next 12 years, actually. I understand their frustration, just to add another comment. Like you said, sometimes government moves slow, and sometimes those making the requests do have to stay on you, but to come up to the podium and read a personal text or a message